Approve all of us in September's financial report.
I do apologize you got September today. If y'all want to approve office and approve September next month is fine, but we are balancing everything is is good in September.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
Make a motion.
Make a motion if we approve the office financials.
Motion by Michael Pierce to approve the office financials.
I'll second.
Second by Bruce. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Our approved deals will be paid. Anybody got any questions?
The police department. That's coming out of their budget, right?
Yes.
True.
Everything vetted, everything's good?
Yes. Um, the two large expenses that you have on there, the evidence room, that was, we were out of compliance with the state.
Yes, I remember that.
And then the charge, the twenty-six fifty down there is for evidence kits, they had none. Uh, he pretty much started with nothing and he's finally getting his department built up where it needs to be.
So was that evidence room for a, so we never did anything with the, um, interview room? That was never done?
No.
We had a conversation about that.
I'll let Chief Cubs take that.
Yeah, we decided that we would make do what we have instead of doing anything that would alter that room. The way if we did have to have a meeting over there or anything like that.
Okay. Alright.
I can tell you, I spoke to Isabelle, the lady with West Tennessee Planning. She sent me some, uh, documents this week. I sent her a floor plan of City Hall and the police department. And they are looking at funding possibly to move City Hall to another location and extend the police department into the existing City Hall building.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I make a motion to approve the bills.
Motion by Michael Pierce, second by Bruce.
Yeah.
You wrote Paulson says many.
I'm sorry, Michael Ford?
Yes.
Denise? Yes.
Yes.
Well, I want to say something about Chief Cubs and doing what he's done, it's got, now he's compliant on everything, so.
Fantastic.
Something that needed to be addressed, need to get care of.
Alright, second reading of first policy order. Everybody should have a copy of that.
Yeah.
Anybody got any questions? Who had a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the bidding process.
My second. Motion by Mr. Neese, second by Michael. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, replace Mr. Bill Boulter as zoning inspector. Did you put copies for everybody?
I did not. You should have three in there, um, I had spoken to another gentleman that never came in. So that's all that we had that applied.
Shane, for the zoning inspector, do they have to have certain qualifications for that?
Not really other than having to read Nova ordinances and resolutions and like footage off the property lines.
Use state measure and apply that what their measurements to what the ordinance is state.
Ellen Catterey?
C-A-D-O-R-E-T, yes.
So we have Ellen Catterey, Lacy Chumley, and Michelle Johnson?
Yes.
Have any of them been interviewed or, or none?
Yeah.
Just application submitted?
I did speak to Ms. Ellen, she's got a little bit of experience in the construction and estimating field. I didn't, I wasn't there when Ms. Michelle applied and I don't think I was there when Ms. Lacy applied. I think they came in when I was in Nashville.
Lacy's on the TCAT and she's well there and does support from homes, but her husband used to work for us at C A P.
All they've done is filled out an application to interview you, that's it.
Now, are we doing on applicants, if we hire somebody, are we still doing the M V R and the background check?
Before that, good. We can also extend the application period, um, if we need to.
Recommendation of the mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, who are we doing interviewing? You all who?
I was. And any of the board members, as far as I go. Do you accept these three or you continue? Cause I got applications if we get more interest.
I say continue.
Okay. So, do we have a motion?
Does anyone have a, an objection to continuing? So then I make a motion that we continue the application process.
Yeah, at least for one more month. Being winter months, construction not going to be as much if it's seen it all in town, but still, I give, you know, if anybody's still in, you're another to the next board meeting anyway, another.
What's our sense of urgency?
End of month or whatever.
Do we have one? I don't know that we have one. Is there a posted job description?
I have a copy of the job description in the post that I made, I've just, I have the condensed version of it.
Is it on the website?
It is not. I just have a Facebook page, we don't have a website, so.
That's what I mean, on the city page.
But I, but yeah, I did post it on the city Facebook page. Um, the complete job description is at City Hall and is available if anybody wants to look at it. It's a couple of pages long, so I did not post it. I can, but I did not. It was also ran in the paper.
Can you send me a copy of that?
I can.
Thank you.
So we really don't have a sense of urgency right now?
What, the end of the month maybe?
We can extend it to the end of the month and then I can, um, give y'all any more names that do apply. Maybe set interviews up the week before the board meeting for anybody that can make the interviews and then kind of go from there.
We have a motion, we don't want it to die.
Yeah, Michael, yeah, I ain't want it to die.
I still say it.
Michael's motion to continue taking out the cases last second.
Second.
Second by Trey. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Alright, new business. Discuss renewal of animal control contract. I have reached out to a friend that lives in Jackson, it was on the Jackson, City, Jackson Madison County Board. Trying to figure out this dog issue. And there, and I'm a dog lover, I don't want people to take this the wrong way. But they run nothing but a no kill shelter. Pick the dog up, dog has five days to eat and not. But with that being said, that's still going to cost the city. Oh, I think Jess has overrun the dogs. Facility she's got down there is not real big. So I don't, I mean, I don't, I'm checking into it, but I mean, there's no grants that I'm aware of to get anything to try to help with the dog situation.
The problem with the grants that I ran into with West Tennessee Planning is that we are renting the building to her. It is not a city operated shelter, so the city cannot actually apply for grants on her behalf. Because she's running a business out of there. Um.
But.
We would have to.
Hold on.
Go ahead.
Now, this is the same issue we have with the other board. We're renting her the building, but we're paying electric and water, right?
Yes.
Then the city's in the dog business. At the end of the day, I don't care how you look at it. So we, we've got to determine what we're going to do. Cause I mean legitimately, she's not running a business on her own. I mean, what are you paying?
She's assisting us.
Correct. So I mean, we've, we've got to figure something out, what we're going to do with these dogs.
Another thing too is, you know, you're getting calls from every which way but loose. Tiptonville, you know, so we, I mean, the county, so that shouldn't be, you know, that's not us. So we need, you see what I'm saying?
So. On the grant, what are they saying? If it's in our name and there are grants available?
If it's, if it's a city run, like let's say we stopped the contract process, we took complete, taken back over of the shelter. She would have to become a part-time employee of the city. And then we would be able to apply for grants, but the way that we're doing it, we're renting, we have a contract stating she's renting the building and she has a business license. So we would have to end this process and bring her on and make it a city.
But by law, the city's responsible, the dogs for the first five days.
For the five, first five days.
So I mean, we're in the dog business, they just, they cheated the system.
Right, and we talked about doing that, about bringing her on and that way we can apply for grants and things like that.
I've seen grants for the, um, to help rebuild buildings, to make it bigger. There's also, I just recently learned, uh, y'all seen the spay and neuter license plates, right? When you become a municipality, you're like, you're able to access that money that people pay to get those license plates for a spay and neuter program. There's also trap neuter release programs for all the stray cats that we're overrunning it, that we can trap them, give them spayed and neutered, let them back out.
My suggestion to the board would be to table it. Let's discuss what we need to do to go forward. I mean.
Can she apply for grants on her own?
She can, she can as a business.
But she's not.
But the city would not be involved in it. And then you're looking at the thing that the building is actually owned by the city.
You're still going to run it.
Still be involved in the process because it's our building.
The rent would have to be X amount a month and then she'd have to take full responsibility, electrical, water, the whole shebang. City would not be.
Can you oppose?
I, hey, I'm, I'm just making, I mean, I'll be whatever you guys want to agree. Dogs are issue.
It would be a lot easier for me to get a grant for the shelter if, if it was a city facility.
But here, here's.
I mean, it's so convoluted right now.
Right.
Here's my thing on it, if we do that, then we work out something with the city of Tiptonville and county.
There you go.
Say that, say that again?
If, if, if we get in the dog business, which we basically are, then we would work something out with the city of Tiptonville and the county that we would pick their dogs up for X amount of dollars.
Absolutely.
The dog problem ain't going to go away.
No, it's going to get worse.
I agree with you, I mean, and the thing is, I think we're a drop off one. I've got two in my office. I take care of Michael mine.
I've had them dropped at my house.
I mean, people just drop dogs, I mean, it's just, it's not a toy, I mean, you can't have it for a little while.
I have threw some numbers together.
Why can't you just delete everything you got going in and put it, put the dog pound in the city real?
And that's what.
Put it in y'all name.
That's what we're talking about.
Put it in y'all name, then you can get your grant or whatever. And then you could deal with her on that situation. As far as the dogs or other counties and other cities, you should be charging them. Cause she have to use gas, or time, to go, unless they don't do their own dog pound. And when it come to, uh, another city, they're not going to help another city. Just because they're not going to come out and help us do nothing is because they did, they would, therefore, we need to be charging them for her going up there. You put it in the city name, then you can run it. Like I say, you paying the life bill, you paying the water bill, along with the city.
And it makes it easy, cause it's all.
Right.
But she's already overcrowded as it is, you know, that, that, the first thing, if you decide to do this, you're going to have a large building.
We're going to have to expand the building, yeah.
We do have an adoption event Saturday, which I'm going to have several of our dogs out there in Darcey at that.
But is that, is that a, is that a legit deal? Because I mean, normally they want you having spayed neutered before they get adopted.
See, now that's where we're at right now. When I'm not, with y'all not having it, I, they can sign a waiver with the state and they will do it. They pay me a twenty-five dollar refundable deposit. If they get it done within X amount of days, they'll get that twenty-five back. If they don't, then I keep it and it goes towards, you know, helping try and get somebody else.
To get them spayed, neutered, that's, that's hard bugs, easy. So, so they're not, they're going to give you twenty-five, it's not going to happen.
I think more importantly, if she gets attacked or injured in the process of picking up one of the dogs, where's the liability from?
Yeah, it's going to be on the city, cause city's liable for first five days, so.
And also what I saw on Facebook, we had a dog that was bit, was the dog bitten there on the?
No, it was picked up and it had already, it was previously bit.
So, so when pit bulls are picked up in the county and out of the county, are we going to be responsible for the upkeep of that dog, sending it to the vet? And then, you know, pit bulls are hurt, we're not, you're not even going to have them in the city.
That's right.
I agree.
So what about, I mean, what are we going to do with all these pit bulls?
That's where the no kill part comes in.
Yeah, I mean, what do we do with them?
You have to put them in.
Or what do we do with them now? We have a lot.
Uh, everything I have is a pit bull mix, a pit bull mix. Well, you can have them, but they have to be registered.
Any dog. Pit bulls got a bad name, I get that. But any dog bite, it doesn't matter.
It has teeth.
I've got two going to do exactly.
Yeah, but I don't want a pit bull around my brain.
Well, I don't either, but I'm just saying, any, any.
No, a chihuahua around man.
You can ask Trey, I've been bit by a small. I don't want my Barney Goll around your grandkids.
Safety issue.
Yeah.
This is a health and a safety issue, this is not solving any problems, talking about what we're going to do after they're picked up and making the build, building bigger to keep them. We've got to nip the problem somewhere at the beginning.
Well, the problem's already, we're in the dog business, so we've got to get it, we've, we've got to get in or get out.
But, but a lot of times though, if the homeowner of the insurance company, the homeowner's insurance knows that they have a dangerous breed of dogs, they won't insure that house. And I promise you, probably eighty percent of these dangerous dogs, I bet you the insurance company, if they even have insurance, does not know.
I can tell you, I'm also the court clerk. And we have just now, with Chief Cubs on board, started actually citing people into court for their dogs running loose, we've had this the last couple of months. And the last case that we had, it was the dog that had become a nuisance and it was always, oh, we got out of the fence, you know, but it was the neighbor, it was the neighbor. And every time the neighbor would have his dog outside, miraculously this dog would get out of the fence and come towards him and hit the dog. But he was forced to get rid of the dog because it was a pet and it was vicious, they deemed it vicious. And he was made to get it out of the city limit, so they're supposed to have a permit for those breeds of dogs and they have to follow certain guidelines and if they don't, then they can be made to get rid of the dog.
How's that going, make it registered?
Would not have one person registered yet.
Well, I just had two chained up in the yard next door to me, two pit bulls on chains. One of them's not coming to my house because it's so close to my property.
Yeah.
And should a chain break? Not good news.
Where you knew that?
We're down there at church. So, you know, it would take, it would take days to get off.
Not one person.
That kind of goes along with, they, you know, they don't care.
I do.
End of the day, they don't care. Got tired of it, got tired of fighting it, feeding it, whatever.
Plus, if a dog goes out and bites somebody, it don't belong to them.
Sure. Yeah, so, yeah. You know what I'm thinking, I don't want to think it, but you know, you got, it's, you got to start somewhere.
But I don't think it's something that we can really answer tonight.
No, I agree with the same, but you know, by the next meet, we have to have a game plan.
I have crunched some numbers together on it, all three, the Tiptonville, A County originally went together. On about how much it would cost us if we did a eighteen to twenty-four kennel run. On average, it's going to cost us about sixty-seven hundred, a thousand a year.
Sixty-seven hundred or sixty-seven thousand?
Sixty-seven thousand. You know, I don't, I don't front people.
A year?
A year. Let's keep this small.
What's that consist of? What, where you getting all the numbers from?
Uh, salary and then a kennel tech. Cause once you get a lot more going like that, you've got to have help, you have to have somebody in there to help you plan.
Yeah, but if we do this and do a no kill shelter, five days and then, I mean, you, you know, if they're not adopted and moved on in five days, then they're, I'd say, but they're gone.
That is a kill shelter, not a no kill.
Well, that's, well, that's what I mean.
Okay.
What's the difference between an adopted dog and a rescue dog?
They're both the same.
They all both the same?
Yeah.
You're just adopt, you're, you're paying an adoption fee to rescue a dog out of.
I went over there, got her birth and, and I had a little over struggling looking dog that I wanted and the girl said, that's a rescue dog.
Okay, what they're doing, they have dogs that they consider are not adoptable, for whatever reason, they might have a health condition. They may have, um, be considered vicious, like they're not good with children or they're not good with this, or they, a certain breed of dog. They will send them to rescue facilities where it's a, it's just, usually they're nonprofit private organizations that either have a facility where these dogs live for the rest of their lives or they work with them to get them more socialized so that they can become adoptable.
Now, sometimes Roger, the rescue dog is like people run puppy mills and they go in and get all those dogs.
Yeah.
That's considered a rescue dog.
Well, I, I, when we walked outside, the boy over, the boy over told me, he said, what it is, they, they get paid for that rescue dog.
Yeah.
A lot more money and maybe one of these over in the dock.
Which is crazy, at the end of the day, it's both the same, you're adopting, you're adopting a pound dog.
He said that dog, a dog that needs therapy.
Right.
How much do you give a, to adopt one, a twenty-five dollar?
No, so depending on what I've been able to do. So if they've only had their, their shots, their basic vaccinations, it's fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars.
With a twenty-five dollar refundable spay and neuter. If I've done their rabies and they've been spayed or neutered, because I have had people that have donated enough to get dogs spayed and neutered, it then becomes a hundred and fifty. Which is not even paying me back for all the money that I put into them.
Where do you do it?
Also have their ratings shots.
Where do you do it, spay and neuter?
I go to Bells.
Yeah, yeah, on Bells.
Bells is the cheapest that I have found by far for anything.
Real good.
I mean, Darcey already works with two different firms, you know, they work with most of their, and Darcey society, so it, you know, it's harder for them to take on any other shit.
Okay. What's the motion we table this issue till next month?
Yes.
We may be something new.
Well, I think.
Second.
Yeah, but recommendations that you have, just send them to, uh, the mayor so that we could put together a plan for next month's meeting.
Discuss rural fire fees.
You take both, I got a first and a second.
Oh, I'm sorry, first by Michael.
First by Bruce, second by Paul.
Second by Michael Ford. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
And discuss rural fire fees. Right now, we're getting fifty for single.
Fifty dollars for a single story, seventy-five for, or for a, it's supposed to be even for a flat that does not have a house sitting on it. Seventy-five for a two-story.
My recommendation would be, do I tend to go to a hundred dollars flat? And it takes something to run this fire department.
Yep. How long has that been since that, those fees were put into place?
Years, years and years.
Really?
Probably twenty, twenty-five years.
Our fire department has a very, very small budget because they, there's just not one.
I make a motion, put them a hundred dollar flat.
Trey makes a motion.
Okay, I also have to have in there, if we do it that way, there'll be a five parcel cap. So if the homeowner, if a property owner owns ten parcels, they would still just pay up to five hundred dollars for that parcel. And then, um, the second part of it is, if you have a resident that does not pay the fire fee and we have to send the fire department to their home to fight a fire or to their property to fight a fire, there would be a twenty-five hundred dollar fee.
Shaw, the Shaw railway said we weren't going, if they didn't pay the money, we weren't going.
And this is modeled after the contract that Tiptonville just passed for their volunteer fire department.
Sixty, I think ours, I think ours used to be.
Encourages the people to pay the hundred so that they're covered and you don't.
Do what, true?
I'm, I'm thinking that right now, that it's, if you don't have it, it's a flat. Five hundred dollar, if we have to come out there, even for the littlest thing, a trash fire, it's five hundred dollars. So.
I mean, you, you settle it.
Is that, okay, when I, when I.
That goes to the insurance company, right?
Yes, when I talked to Miss Pam the other day, she said, up until she retired, that's the way that they did it. And then it just kind of went to the wayside. So we send the fire department letters out and it just is what it is, whatever you get. But with this new program that we're putting into place, I'm going to get with Jackson Mill, I'm going to get a list of everybody that lives in our service area. And everybody's getting a letter, so we will keep that maintained.
Okay.
As.
So we're going to do the hundred and if they don't pay it, they're going to pay twenty-five hundred?
If we go out, it's twenty-five hundred. Their insurance company would pay five hundred and they would pay the rest.
Got a motion by Trey?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
By Mr. Neese.
Okay.
All in favor? Alright, any opposed, motion carries.
So how are we going to get this out to the people?
We send letters, we'll send letters in, in November and it'll get until the end of January to pay the, okay.
And this is going to be written someplace, right?
Yeah, it's in, it's in, it's in the ordinance, it's in the minutes as well. I mean, this has been going on since the nineties. It's just been too cheap.
Neglected.
So is it, is it a resolution?
It's a rural, it's a rural fire fee that, that they done, done back in the early nineties to take care of county residents.
Okay, so it's just going to be.
County fire department.
So it's just going to be updated?
That's correct.
Correct.
Comes into the city.
Yeah, all money comes to the city.
That'd be rural or everybody?
No, it's just rural. Now, if you want to pay extra, Roger, we don't, we'll take. We're not asking, but we will take donations.
I'm worried about nacho waffle.
Abraham Locke.
Yeah, hot chow.
Any update on the, anything on the police department?
Yeah, we just got approved yesterday for a ten thousand dollar grant, Tennessee Highway Safety. We're going to look into some prices on some radars. Which we had to, we had to put what we wanted before we applied for the grant. A couple radars, people don't have them, generator. That generator can be used if we have power out of the City Hall and we need, we need backup. Or we end up getting some of these growth signs. Or we end up getting some of these road signs we're talking about, the generator can be used to power those, especially the arts and crafts town. You wanna put something up there to help slow people down. Also some traffic cones for each vehicle and how does it look, uh, best. Yeah, we got to prove on that.
I don't think we've been having a race of the city during the arts and crafts.
One.
One?
Yes.
I wanted, that's right, yeah.
Just, just one forward. Never mind.
Chief Cubs, at our next meeting, can you tell us when y'all are gonna be shooting radars?
Hey, helps everything.
Hey, Chief, do you have fire extinguishers in your, y'all's vehicles?
Uh, I think we have them in the newer ones, the three newer ones. There's not one in my truck and there's not one that charges.
Yeah, I need to have one in your, your vehicle.
Yeah, what Michael was going with that is when John Cochran was coming home that day from U C P D when he left, oh, got off shift and that fire happened on twenty-two. That had on collision.
It'd be nice.
Yeah, you know, that, they'd have fire extinguishers, I think. I'm not saying.
We do.
Uh.
State fire systems.
Tell me which is.
Okay.
There's anything going on with it? All the streets good?
Just going, we're hanging up.
They're good, fine. No potholes and all that.
I want two more that I put up and get them a grabber, other than that, just.
I'm gonna ask a question, Sean.
Sure.
You know, the building that the store was at, done here?
Yeah, yeah.
Two.
Who's responsible for keeping that lot up?
Ricky Patel.
Ricky Patel needs to be.
Easy, easy, easy.
Okay.
We talked to him.
We, we're working on something, man.
We're trying, trying to work a deal, it's easy.
I get you, I get you.
Alright. First Tim, Paul, if you come forward, please, sir.
First Tim has completed the investigator's school, investigator's school. And he's got his family with him tonight. Glad you're with us, appreciate everything you do. Okay, so she can. I'd like to get you this fly, my, with your certificate and also.
It's in my picture.
That's my picture. I can see his cape without. Alright. We're just on the happy city, would be appreciated. All of you guys.
Hey, just to add to that, I don't know, Ridgely has ever had an investigator. I looked all the way back to the nineties and I didn't see one. Yeah, I, I feel like this is real huge for us, man, uh, crime rate increasing and, and it's just something else to be proud of. Tim, uh, he went through the TBI investigator's school. No problems at all. We gave him all the equipment, you know, the, uh, all the evidence equipment, uh, crime scene equipment that we bought. All that was issued to him, uh, and we're actually looking into some more classes to advance his training.
Fantastic.
Appreciate you. Congratulations, Tim.
Thank y'all.
You wanna make a big speech during the night?
Speech, speech.
No. Appreciate y'all, everything you've done for me and give me an opportunity and, uh, look forward to serving the citizens of the town.
I appreciate you.
Glad to have you, bud.
Citizens.
Taking, taking some admission, that's good, man.
Does anybody like to address the board, problems, issues? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, what would it take for each one of you all to receive a mic?
A mic?
One of you all need a mic because you have.
You trying to say microphone is real quiet?
I'm very quiet. No, I'm not saying that. I'm just talking about, I think it would benefit each one of you all get a mic. When you address a speaker or something, we can hear a speaker.
We, we can do that.
Pretty sure Bruce can do that.
Yeah.
Bruce can do that.
We'll get that done.
I like to see that. I think some careful too, where you all, when you're speaking, you can understand.
Yeah, I don't like Ray talking if I got a mic.
I know, but.
It's hard to get real quiet here, real quick.
Anybody else got anything?
I don't know, we're on video.
Anybody else?
Hey Shane, I wanna say one thing.
Yes, sir.
Uh, man, everything that, that's been going on this past year, uh, man, our budget got approved. It allowed me to give all the guys raises so we can be competitive with the county and the city of Tiptonville. It also allowed us to send Tim to investigator training. And once he completed that, that gave him a little more money. But your professionalism on the board, man, I appreciate every one of you guys. And anything I've asked, I may not have gotten it, cause I know I've asked Shane for a lot of stuff, but, but, man, you guys are level-headed, professional, man, I appreciate you guys.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
You never talk about it? Yeah, that's what we do. Okay, just checking.
Ms. Lynn? Will you want to address?
No.
Alright, on our, uh, slum ordinance violations, you know, we've been accused that we're not setting anything out. We've got twenty-three actors right now. Uh, some have been resolved, some are still pending, some are working on it, uh.
Some have been cited in the court.
Yeah, I was gonna say, there've been several that's been cited in the court. So if anybody's got any issues with any properties, let us know. I mean, I try to get out and ride around and look, uh, see what's going on. But I mean, we're just trying to clean the town up and make it more presentable and.
You can tell, how do you get a copy of the building codes and, you know, there are real estate laws that address a lot of this.
Uh, should be building codes in a, yeah, I was gonna say, that should have them.
Come City Hall and I can help you get whatever you need.
I'm not an insurance, of course, we gotta work on our online stuff with, uh, MTS. I don't know if our ordinances and all that stuff, they're not updated, so.
Well, I don't think that's gonna apply.
Right. I agree. So has anybody got any questions on this slum ordinance?
I do. Let's hear it. These unpaid, these are the ones that I'm concerned about. What's the next step?
I sent, this week I sent new letters to them and I gave them until October the thirty-first to pay. The ones that are homeowners, that will be applied to their property tax rolls as a lien on their property. The renters, I will be sending to Christine Coronado who will take up collection after it's with them and then they'll have attorney fees attached.
Thank you, man, appreciate it.
Good deal.
Do you have any other questions or any other concerns?
No, I don't have, nothing else, Mr. Mayor.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second, Ms. Nice, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.